Good evening, folks. Welcome. It's beautiful evening. Two meetings tonight. We will start off with a short special board voting meeting and then we'll move into our regular monthly board workshop. So we'll first start off with the pledge of life.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, if you could take a moment of silence, this being the 17th anniversary of 9/11, time to recognize the victims and those who also lost their lives in responding in an emergency capacity in the service of the law. So please just a moment of silence for our victims. Thank you, everyone. Also, I want to congratulate the high school administration staff and also the students who prepared a really nice remembrance this morning at the high school. And Mr. Dean, I think the principal person involved, primarily with the staff and students in inviting our local first responders, our community members, police, fire department. It was a very, I would say, very respectful, very somber, very moving opportunity for our students to really better understand what happened on 9/11. And most of these kids were not born, interestingly enough, 17 years ago. And so, even if they had been born, they would have no recollection of those events. So I think this annual opportunity to commemorate this very significant event of history is a testament to, I think, the efforts of not only our administration, but also remembering the part of the community and those people who are first responders, who are prepared to give their lives every day if necessary for the safety and service of our community and of our school still living. So beyond that, in terms of the agenda, I'm going to move to our first item on the agenda, which, or second action actually, which is public comments. So anyone in the board who would like to address the board on items in this agenda or any items that are pertinent to the district, this is the time or opportunity, whether you're an administrator, community member, please introduce yourself, let us know who you are and where you live.
Hi, I'm Tracy Sankar.
Push the mic to work.
Is that her?
Yes.
I'm Tracy Sankar. I'm a parent of a little girl at Brighton and I have two in high school.
I'm Maureen Baird and I'm also a Brighton parent.
And we just wanted to address the board about the matter of school nurses right now. And we're aware that you are aware of the situation, what's going on. But just from a parent perspective, Maureen and I both have daughters with type 1 diabetes. And fortunately, they've been at it for so long that they're very familiar with how to take care of themselves. And it's not exactly a crisis for them. But we'd like you to know that we probably communicate with the school nurse more than their actual classroom teacher. That's our go-to person because our children's health is the number one agenda on our table. So it's a little bit concerning for us right now to kind of be in limbo right now. And I can't say that I speak for all the parents of chronically ill kids, but I think it's probably safe to say that we're all a little bit on edge, not knowing who the nurse is in our building each day, what our kids are going to have to face, who we need to call. For example, the first week of school, my daughter's blood sugar was very low, to a point where I had her blue picone shot in my hand because I wasn't even sure if the person who was the substitute nurse at the time had ever been trained to use blue picone. So just in case, I was ready to bring my daughter back to life at the beginning. And fortunately, the situation worked out just fine. I'm very happy with the Brighton staff. They really know what they're doing. I didn't have to go to school, but it's something that I really didn't want to have to worry about. And it's not just me. Everybody else, I mean, there's more than just diabetics there, kids with asthma, all sorts of different things. And well, as a result of that, I needed to change some settings on my daughter's pump. And well, these are doctor's orders that need to be communicated to the centralized nurse, which the nurse for Brighton now, as you probably realize, is mostly at her brain. So she would be the person I would need to talk to about my daughter's condition, even though she really doesn't have much contact with my daughter.
Excuse me, I have a question for a moment.
Yes, go ahead.
Don't assume that we know what you're talking about because probably most of us don't.
Okay.
So please give us as much detail as you could.
Sure. Can I give you any clarification on what I'm?
Nope, just keep going, but don't assume that we know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, feel free to interrupt if I made something unclear.
Thank you.
Anyway, I had to change some doctor's orders and it needed to go to a nurse who's not even in her building, who's actually taking care of another building right now. And I really felt bad because I know that that's more paperwork on her when she's dealing with another building right now. And just the conversations I've had with her, I know she's on edge, she's just frustrated trying to keep everything together and doesn't feel like she's doing as good a job as she could. And all this to say, I understand that you're in a situation right now where you don't have somebody ready to be put in, and so you just kind of have to make ends meet. But just from a parent perspective, if I could urge you to continue working on this a little bit more urgently so we could have some sort of consistency, that would maybe be great.
Not too much more that Tracy didn't allude to. Consistency is key in type 1 diabetes management as well as any other illness that will be seen over by a school nurse. I could go into specific details on things that have happened this year so far that are concerning, but.
Could you go into specifics?
I could. I phoned the school nurse line and around 11:30, which could probably be a busy time on a day, I'm looking for a correction bolus, which is just to give my daughter a little bit more insulin because I saw a high trend on her blood sugar. And there was nobody answering. I left a voicemail. It was never returned, nor acknowledged. My daughter did not get a notification to do a correction bolus to help bring her blood sugar down and had to wait until lunchtime. Not a dire emergency, but still, an overall care is concerning because I didn't have that kind of contact that Tracy alluded to that's very important. So I think what we're looking to know is primarily what's going to be done in the immediate, you know, steps to ensure that we have a consistent certified school nurse or qualified person to be in that case.
Well, I guess I don't know why it wasn't answered, but did you call the main office? Because I know anytime I called the main office, I always get a response mainly.
I did not call the main office because my contact was the nurse. I did know lunch was coming, like I said. It wasn't an emergency. It wasn't like Tracy had alluded to with low blood sugar. If it was, I would have probably been there or called the office additionally, yes. I've never encountered that issue through our years at Maureen or our first year at Brighton.
I know that the people in the main office, there's always someone there. So if that was concerning, we may have gotten a answer from you. Thank you.
Dr. Maureen, do you want to?
Yes. I'm Dr. Miller. I'm head of the school nurses. I'll be glad to contact each of you for your specific questions to make sure that they're answered. But just to generally give you some more information, a certified school nurse in any district is to cover up to about 1,500 students. The only building we have, it would be one building for that kind of coverage in our high school because of the amount of students there. Our other two certified school nurse positions cover multiple buildings. That is how it's always been. A certified school nurse that covers both Lorraine and Brighton businesses used, as you had referenced, you spoke of her. She is right now working, her main everyday post is at Lorraine. As in last year, her main everyday post was at Brighton, but she also covers junior high. So it is very common for a recertified school nurse to be in one building and they're covering more than one building due to the number of population in the building. That being said, all of our buildings are covered by a certified nurse, RN particularly or an LPN, every day. Since we've been in schools, there has not been a day that we did not have an RN in the building. Another thing that I insist on, which I found to be kind of unique, is that because of our dollar bills and some of the other health concerns in the district with our children, any nurse that will work in our building must have an orientation first. We can't have a substitute nurse come in and be as fresh as a daisy and never work in one of our buildings. I won't allow it. So we create a list with our agency nurses that they've been in the building before. I'm sorry that your call wasn't returned. I do agree with Pat that it's that we have to always call the office to say, you know, what happened. We do have another CSN who's getting acclimated to the district and is used, is working with her. And we've actually double covered Brighton all of last week and the week before with two RNs. So that new nurse can get acclimated with some use and the other nurses covering day-in and day-out operations. So we kind of doubled the coverage over at Brighton last week and the week before. And I think the principle for the test of that, we had two RNs in that building because we wanted to make sure our students had been absolutely cared for. But I think one of the situations is that I'm kind of figuring out from listening to you, I may not have communicated that well enough.
That's what I was actually just going to say. I appreciate hearing this now because we get a little nervous if we don't know that somebody knows exactly, I mean, you understand how diabetes is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it requires very precise care, and so we want to just make sure that.
And I know Mrs. Hughes is in touch with all of you prior to the start of school year to make sure all your plans were in place and everything was in place. And so it wasn't preferred to communicate the plan as far as coverage issues, but I will make sure that I get a hold of those of you to answer any questions. Always contact my office if there's ever any question. But I just want to assure you, because of the situation, we actually double covered over at Brighton all last week and the week before.
Appreciate that and I appreciate the communication.
Sure.
I have a question before you sit down. Are you familiar with our district policy on diabetes management?
Yes.
Policy to.
Actually, I think I wrote to you about that before and just made sure that we were on the same page.
And do you have a sense that we're pretty well compliant with them?
Yeah, I feel after you answered my questions about that, I did feel much better understanding about that. But I just wanted to make sure with new personnel and everything that everything is smoothly.
And we share your urgency. We've had a nurse CSN out on medical leave. So we had spent the summer looking for anyone and everyone that we can get to fill the roles. So we do have a third CSN coming online, and that's the complement we had last year.
Is that through the temp agency or?
Yes, yes, yes. Right now through the temp agency, yes.
I just have a couple of questions. So what's a challenge in recruiting certified students?
The challenge you can be finding is not a lot of people seem to be going into school nursing, certified school nursing. Some of our local colleges have already closed down their programs because people are becoming certified school nurses. So the availability of CSNs is less as a whole. The other piece is people become, they're in one school district and they stay in the school district until they kind of get comfortable there and be able to have that. So the population doesn't tend to move around a lot. That's a big thing. We're even having a hard time besides the CSN, finding RNs because districts can hire CSN, RNs and LPNs to cover working services within the district, and we're having hard to find RNs as well.
I want to follow up a question. Is a CSN, its own separate program from a regular nursing program?
Yes. A CSN is a certified school nurse and it's under a carbon footprint. The education, they have to give a certification and they're under a teacher's union contract that works up, and they are charged with overseeing a certain amount of students and they send up to 15. And our CSN cover about 1,200 to 1,300.
So if you wanted to be a CSN, you would have to have a bachelor's degree in, sort of, high school nursing or something.
An RN and then you get a CSN copy.
So one of the issues here was a communications issue. Is there some sort of mechanism that we can put in place to ensure that while two parents have shown up tonight, there's probably many more that might not know the process of the phone calls and answers or how to get a hold of somebody? Is there some way to, I don't know if they have documentation on those students who have chronic illness that, you know, parents would have?
504. Pardon me? We have 504 plans.
So you might be able through 504 plans to figure out who those students are and communicate with them so that parents aren't uncertain. Can we do something like that?
Yes, absolutely. I'll work with the CSN because they know who all the parents are and students that have the medical health plans in place and part of the 504s and who we need to contact to make sure they understand how they're being treated.
Have we had any applicants for the positions of CSN or RN?
We have.
In having those applicants, have they walked away from the jobs because our salaries aren't matching and competitive with whatever we are currently?
Well, we, I'm sorry, I'll just, we have people who require, we have no one applying. I did speak to one person. She's coming from a district that pays above what our top salary is right now at this point for the whole salary scale.
Is our salary scale anywhere the medical profession is? Is it?
Well, they are on the teacher's contract.
I'm just asking, very practical question, medical professionals are very much in demand and look as very much a growth force for the next 30 years as the aging population at this time. Are we asking maybe if we have the right structure for our pitch question?
I can agree with that.
Standard structure for CSN? What is the primary reason that a CSN is not coming there? Is it compensation?
Yes. The people that I spoke to who required, who were CSN in the other school district, the compensation, because they had so much tenure in your other school district, when they would change school district, they would more than likely be paying no taxes.
So I know a little bit about nursing. And I assume if we're using a temp agency, that we're probably paying significantly more money for a temp agency than you would pay for your RNs. So what would we pay on an annual basis for a temp?
I would wish to do that calculation in my head right now.
We're hoping that this temp is long-term, is it short-term or long-term? Because we have a CSN coming back.
But the CSN was through the temp agency also, you said, correct?
I'm sorry.
You said the CSN you were speaking of is through the temp agency.
Yeah, she's right here and you have a CSN who's out right now on leave. She's here until that person comes out.
Right, so also a temp expense, which is a higher expense.
We would never get a CSN to come here on a long-term, so they want a contract. Stay down.
Absolutely.
I appreciate Mr. Brady pointing out. I just think it's worth having a discussion. I mean, if we're, you know, we have a piece of legislation from the state that deals with safety in schools and yet we have children with chronic illnesses that we should equally take as attention to, there's as much an opportunity for somebody to get a diabetic, there's more of an opportunity for somebody to get a diabetic shot than for somebody to go to school district and shoot it off. So I think when we think about school safety, I mean, this is as much important, this is as important as if we were planning for anything else. And I think that to, I understand this, the CBA, and I understand our concerns about the CBA, but perhaps if we get ready to have that discussion again, we may have to think about it differently if we're truly having a problem recruiting people to keep our children in.
Thank you.
Is this a function of the fact that, now I read that, as Mr. Brady said, that RNs are in such high demand? I mean, I've heard that RNs are making adequate money in hospitals. Can you speak to that, Mike? There you are. I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's over time. It's just, so what's going to make them come down to whatever the level is that we have? They can make much.
Well, it depends on where you work. Pardon me?
A regular schedule can be in place.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt that a school district schedule would appeal to a nurse versus, you know, somebody who has to work in healthcare settings 24/7. You can, I mean, there's a whole variety of reasons that not everybody wants to work in hospital. In fact, most nurses actually don't work in hospitals, they work in other types of settings. So yeah, they are paid for most of the things that they do. At least other districts are paid for.
I have just a question about the process we use for advertising. How do we get the word out that we're looking for this, you know, I mean, a lot of these folks might not be looking at the typical teacher employment sites. So how do we reach out to broader community of nurses to see who would be?
The other websites like Indeed and, you know, those type of recruiting sites are out there online. But it's just a challenge, I think, with people not going to the school nurse.
This is a problem for all districts at this point? You're hearing from other districts as well that they're also? Thank you for bringing that topic to our attention. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to your agenda, item three, personal training district payment.
So we have a memorandum of agreement for a new support position. It's recommended that the board of school directors approve a memorandum of agreement between the Exeter Township Education Support Professionals, PSEA slash Indian, the Exeter Township School District for the new position titled Child Accounting/Central Registration Specialist.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
How does this position come to be needed suddenly?
This position isn't needed, we had a position. The skill set needed for this position, we could not find anyone qualified at the rate we were paying. We were paying at a level one, I believe, level two. So we interviewed two people that came in at commensurate with a level four salary. So that's what we're asking for in this position.
So this is a, this is not a new position? This is still an old one?
I would say it's filling an old one, it's transitioning to a higher skill set.
I was going to say, it's hard as it has to be if we realized that what we've asked the person to be doing, you know, left up in the school district, is that the job title of level two only requires a high school education. And depending on the job, there's an appropriate level of education for a secretary, the most important type of work. We realized as we've asked the person to be doing the job, you need, you're interfacing with our IT department constantly and have to really understand IT level type work. And so we needed to also increase the prerequisite requirements a person had coming in above a high school education, also make the level four position.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve a memorandum of agreement between the Exeter Township Education Association, PSEA, and the Exeter Township School District to compensate the senior high school teachers for semester, if it falls in the semester to, with a stipend of $5,000 for assuming additional responsibilities related to district virtual programs, the general.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious to know where we are in the process.
At this point, excuse me, at this point, the posting closes on the 19th, I believe. And at that point, the committee will do some interviewing and recommend it, convert a applicant to me for.
Have we had a lot of interest?
At this point, I don't. Have we looked at who we have at this point? How many? How many applicants?
To be honest, I'm not exactly sure because I just didn't call, but I think maybe about 20.
Two or three.
So who's going to be screening here, James?
It will be Dr. Winters, Dr. Campbell, and I think one other.
Probably a teacher that's going to be part of the planning, they're a group of about 17 individuals, teachers, administrators, that are involved on this planning team throughout the year. We have a meeting this monthly. And so I'll ask one of the teachers that's on that particular planning team, the joint secretary Campbell, to interview candidates for that special one.
Do we anticipate doing this in semester two, or do you feel we'll be all the work accomplished in the morning?
Now, this is a one semester position, and then the completion of the first semester, then we'll be looking into the coordinator position for applicant at Act 93-0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Or no? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments after you have the template. So we'll, you can run this part of it.
Okay, so I think what we're doing is making a motion to approve certificated staff and support staff under the second.
Second.
Your motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I guess the question. You're not late if you're not.
There's another, there's another motion.
Yeah. Did you have a question about certificated staff and support staff? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll move to guest teachers and the motion is to approve Kristen McBride as guest teacher. Your motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or no? Motion carries.
Change of status, it's recommended the board of school directors approve or ratify the following requests, change of status, limit or deny substitute general cafeteria work level one, transfer to part-time cafeteria A to one.
Any discussion?
This is one of my questions here. It seems to me that like that and the other cafeteria A position, they're just kind of switching almost. Can't we allow that to be a managing function instead of bringing it to the board?
We're reassigning position. And that's an interesting question because I think we're having a policy that we'll be reviewing that's coming up. We'll talk about a condition under which the board should be making recommendations for, you know, when it entails changes of building, changes of assignment, changes of the requirement of additional certification. So in this particular case, this is a substitute transferring to part-time. So that's a change in status. So I think that's a legitimate question. Would you agree with that?
Sure, yeah.
Thanks for the question. And any further discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's the end of our agenda. Are there any other board members who would, at this moment, like to be part of? If not, I'll accept the motion for adjournment of this meeting. Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting. And we're going to move into our workshop meeting. Without break, same as well. And we're going to, could you, to our workshop meeting? This is the type of meeting where we really hope to have as much interaction as necessary. This is not a voting meeting per se, so we hope to give a review and discuss items that will be on the board voting agenda for next Tuesday. So we expect to hear from administrators also who might maybe provide us with additional insight and areas where we may have some questions. Other comments? Is there anyone in the, in the, in the audience who would like to make comments to the board on this agenda? Or any other subject pertinent to the board? We'll move into our next section, which is recognitions. And I will turn that over to Dr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
I am here to recognize the teachers that have taken tenure during the 2017-2018 school year. This is a proud moment for them as well as the district. And I believe we have two in attendance. So we're going to have to come up and get pictures and not really make this a big deal. First person, Alyssa Dine, the Reifton Special Ed itinerant learning support. I just want to read what is on the issue, okay? It said, Exeter Township School District, acknowledgement of successfully completing three years of service in the district with satisfactory ratings. The board of school directors is pleased to grant Alyssa Dine professional employee status awarded in 2018. And our next recipient to be recognized is Jessica Quay, Reifton fifth grade. And I do want to read the names of the other teachers as well. Sheila Ergot from Jacksonworm ESL. Nicole Keen, junior high school science. Nicole Dob, senior high school guidance. Kimberly Brogan, Reifton fifth grade. Jessica Hans, Reifton sixth grade. Ashley Miller, senior high school health and phys ed. And Emily Seiburger, Lorraine guidance. And we will make sure they get their certificates.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips, and congratulations to our newly tendered teachers.
Thank you.
Our next, for the agenda, will feature our program report from Raycon's school principal, Dr. Gray.
Three, Mike.
I'm a superstitious person, but I do want to say that probably in all the years that I've been at Reifton, it's the best start that we've ever had. But it has been a very quiet, very successful start in school year. We have 577 students at this time, which is very similar to what we had last year. We had, and the interesting start where we gained two students, lost two students, going back and forth. We actually lost one this morning early. We had somebody withdraw and went through, and by the end of the day, we actually gained another student. It's really been happening all of the time. But we have, we currently have 11 sixth grade, 11 sixth grade classes. And we have 12 fifth grade classes. Last year, we had reversed that. And as I said, it's been very successful. We were very impressed with our orientation and curriculum overview night. We had a ton of parents that came out to both of those. That was very, very successful. We were very impressed with orientation, which was in August. We had standing remotely at both the morning session and the afternoon evening session, which has never happened before. So we're certainly looking forward to create class of fifth graders as well as sixth graders. In terms of student achievement, we're in our fifth year implementing the Investigations Math Program as well as College Prep Math, CPM. A lot of work was done over the summer. We had teachers that represented fifth grade and sixth grade. We worked with Rose Malinsky. They aligned the investigations, both CPM to state status. And gave them an opportunity to fill in any gaps. We also created curriculum minors, which was very impressive. Some of the things that were done there, I guess the major one was to make sure we had a pacing guide so that the teachers know exactly where they need to be. And that was very successful. Our math teachers will be implementing IXL math software to enhance student learning in mathematics. IXL math software has what Rose told me today, artificial intelligence. I was trying to say I had a bug with it. It has artificial intelligence, which is really kind of impressive because what it really will do is it will work with our students. And for those that need to improve their math skills, some of our lower students will help them. Even some of our higher students will work with them as well. So we are really looking forward to using that program. Our math teachers have done just a terrific job over the years differentiating. And we still have more work to do there, but they have really done a nice job of handling. The IXL math program will help with that as well. This year, our students will be benchmarking each quarter in math. We've been doing benchmarking and reading, and we'll have the star assessment in math. So that'll give us an opportunity to see where the students are on a quarterly basis, to look at data. And we will be looking at data quite a bit this year in our PLC meetings. And it will give us an opportunity at our intervention planning meetings as well to look at the data and try to see what we need to do to improve our skills in math as well as in reading. We have transitioned from the 35-minute science and social studies block to now 70-minute this year. That has been successful to start off of the year. Now our students will have either a 70-minute science or social studies block for the first semester and then either science or social studies for the second semester. But it gives our teachers an opportunity to dig a little deeper into the curriculum than the 70-minute blocks. We're certainly looking forward to that. Our teachers have worked very hard over the summer. My TLA work continues in grades five and six with a specific focus on text-dependent analysis. We've allowed that in the past in this semester. Very good work over the summer. For the second year, students in fifth and sixth grade have been assigned Chromebooks. Our Chromebook program was really successful last year. And our teachers really did an outstanding job. I was very impressed with how they embraced the Chromebooks. And it was very impressive when we would go into classrooms, how they were being used. And I remember last year at this time, standing up in front of the board and saying, "I'm not exactly sure when they're going to go home. We want to make sure that the kids are ready." And last year, the sixth grade Chromebooks went home right around December 1st. The fifth grade Chromebooks went home around the beginning of the fourth quarter. We're expecting the fifth grade Chromebooks to go home October 1st of this year. Kids are ready, teachers are ready, and it has, it really has taken off. It's very, it's been very impressive how much the, how, how well the students have embraced the Chromebooks. When you go into the classroom, it's almost as comfortable for them as picking up a pencil. They really have done a nice job with it, so it really has been successful. Our school council.
Mr. Freeze, a little longer on the issue. In terms of your teachers adapting Chromebooks, are there more self-starters in doing that? Or have we sort of educated them and integrated the computer into the classroom? Have we offered them training or?
I would say the answer to that is a little bit of both. We have many self-starters. And, you know, we do everything in Reifton teams. And what has really happened is our teachers have, teachers that have felt more comfortable with Chromebooks in the beginning have shared their expertise and knowledge with the other teachers on the team. And we've had some very impressive skills of our teachers. And one of our teachers, Joe Fiddler, last year was recognized for all of the great work that he did with Chromebook. And he'd been teaching for quite a while. So honestly, I think what's happening is they're able to see all of the success that their peers are having, and people are sharing that knowledge. So it really has been impressive.
Thank you.
We still continue to work hard with digital citizenship. It's great to give kids Chromebooks, but we need to make sure that they know how to use them. And that is being done, actually will be done with our guidance counselors as well as our librarian. And classroom teachers are also doing that as well. We have what's called the mentor minute that we do every day. And a lot of that is focused on digital citizenship.
Board members participate in that?
Why are you looking at me?
We are just about ready to begin our observations that will take place. Teacher observations will take place at the end of the month. We've had an opportunity to get out into just about every classroom. We've seen a lot of good things to start the school year out. So it has been very successful. One of the things that we are excited about is many of you, when you come into Reifton, once you pass the office, you see a Cal sitting by himself. You do see a Cal sitting by himself. He's not moved in a while, he's, he's been there. And this year, we are going to name him. So every 10 years of not having a name, which is a real sad thing, but we are going to name him. And it's going to be a contest for working with our character counts committee. And our superintendent has graciously dedicated his services to getting Bob. There'll be slime involved, but there'll be something, I tell you that. We are personally looking forward to naming that Cal.
In collaboration with administrative team building. I'm involved, it's a three-way deal here, guys. I'm not going with taking this on.
I'll be right to shower, Cal. Instead of slime, why don't we make it milk?
Slimes are fun.
That doesn't affect the way you're going to shop.
Who wants to share a skinup?
I did want to take the opportunity also to talk a little bit about our character counts, our pro-social activities that we do at, at our school here at Reifton. As you are probably aware, that we are entering our fourth year with our pro-social program, a character counts that was designed specifically towards meet the needs of our Reifton students. They have a five, six building. We're, we're unique in our needs. And we build upon the foundation of what our specialists had originally started on caring, cooperation, and citizenship. Since the specialists had the opportunity to see all the students, they had taken upon themselves to, you know, present a unified message to work together. So we kind of expanded that. I mean, our vision for our character counts program is that it's an environment where all students can learn and feel safe as a valued part of the school community. So it has evolved over the years. We had lessons that had been written specifically for our school. There were, there were eight lessons that had, that we used throughout the year. But this year, we will, for the second year in a row, we'll have team building days for our fifth graders and sixth graders, in which the staff is, is involved in that and to help build community with our school. The eight lessons that we have are presented as days so that all, on the day that we have the first lesson, everybody within the building is doing it that day. So it's kind of a character counts day. So we really want to make sure it's, it's relevant to the students. We also have an assembly we'll have on mid-year this year, in which we will recognize the positive things that students have done through the first semester. And then again, at the end of the year, we'll have another assembly to recognize the students in the second half of the year. And that mid-year assembly is when we are talking about the Cal names being part of that. So that is our ongoing character counts. In addition, this year, we're, we're going to start out an initiative, we're hoping on the peaceful school bus, it's called. It's, it's a program that's designed to decrease inappropriate behavior on school buses while creating a climate of respect and cooperation. The goal is to change the social dynamics on the bus, to help by building stronger relationships, positive relationships between the students, and to teach them the responsibility of their, their bus group, and what happens on the bus. It is, is designed as an extension of the OBEAS program, which you may be familiar with. We use that pro-social program in our junior high, our, our high school. The program was designed originally with, fully with elementary-age children involved. But it, it has evolved the program so that it can include older students. Basically, the hope is to decrease in incidences of bullying or inappropriate behaviors on the bus and address any discipline by relationship building and responsibility. So, and really, one of the concerns I've had as handling a lot of the discipline concerns is I would have students who would tell me that an incident had occurred on the bus. And I'd say, well, who, who else was involved? And they would say, "I don't know their names. I don't know his name." So that really was what kind of motivated me to look forward with this. And of course, our director of transportation is involved also. Any questions?
One question, are we going to make a space system issue?
Yes, we've actually added an additional one. We have the Google screen up. We're expecting students to treat commercials for some of the things that we do. We've also talked about perhaps some announcements in the morning. And also, the second one, we have one in the, the sixth grade side. And you probably saw that last year, the fifth grade side mirrors that. We've got some furniture in there and we're hoping to get the Google screen up.
I'm really flattered here about the peaceful school blessing issue because, you know, over the years, I've heard about a lot of, you know, things happening with, you know, the students are going in. Bus drivers, they really have to be self-disciplined because the bus driver is focusing on driving the bus and not, you know, really able to see what's going on or hear what's going on. I really would like this program to try to help the students to get along better and make progress on it.
Dr. Freeze, about how many students do you have per grade level? I mean, per, per class? Like, what is your average number of students you have?
Right now, it's about 26. There may be an occasional classroom of 27, but pretty much you're 26.
Do you think that's appropriate? Or do you, would you like a little less or a little more?
Not more.
No more than that. I, I think 26 is good. I mean, as a former teacher, it's always nice to have a smaller number. But it seems like.
Is it manageable?
It is manageable, yes. But it's manageable because we have very good kids that work, we're very lucky.
I was just wondering, because I don't like to have my classes and a lot of problems. But in the end, kids are.
I think the best answer there is, is, no, we're just good to look at. We have a little bit of kids, we've been very lucky. This has had a great start. Maybe this will block. I should say that.
I'll have to come visit someday.
Quick question. We heard Jim's comment. I think I know what you guys are talking about when you say make your space. But can you explain that to me just so I'm clear that I, I actually know what you're talking about? I'm not sure what that's for.
It's basically, it's based on collaboration. Whether it's working with computers or just making things and creating things. It's giving students time to create. And it is part of our, our create one, create two class, or extend class. But I mean, we sort of extend is pretty much our create one class. A little bit of create two, if that matters. But it gives them an opportunity to work together. And we, we have green screen in there, we've got two television screens in there. Teachers can take the students in there. They have an opportunity, someone can work on the floor. We've got cushion chairs. Gives them a chance to feel comfortable and get somewhere. We create something wonderful.
Now, is that like the new age of computer classrooms? Like, I know when I was at Wrighton, which was a very long time ago...
Everybody was that.
The MacLab was the thing. So is this kind of the evolution of what the technology is?
This is the evolution. We did have a MacLab originally, and then we had, we've got some, just regular laptops in there, but this is the thing now. Then, then we'll check and visit down, just to work with. As long as Joe way with organizing that space and making sure that we have what we need. Honestly, I could not be happier with those home and standard right now.
I do want to add something about IELTS and math. So since I... Do they work when they're in the classroom, and then since they're in a day, they also work at home, or?
They could, yes.
But they also, like, they're given assignments or time in classroom?
Well, we're going to use it at, specifically at Wrighton, we're going to use it as, they can use it as part of math class, they can also use it during, at the end of our day, we have Eagle Block, which I've talked about many times in my board report. This year, as part of our Eagle Block, we're also going to be offering math to our students as well, for all of our students. And they'll be able to use that program as part of the Eagle Block offerings.
I just have, you know, just one comment. I just wanted to say how encouraged I am to hear about the use of the STAR assessments for math and reading, you know, on a regular basis. I think it's a really positive step. You know, in my mind, you know, it's really critical to identify student progress and be able to identify those students who are maybe in need of more assistance, those kids who are falling behind. I've always thought that a measure of effective district, a good district and great district is how well they treat the most needy students that they have in their school. So I think it's a positive step forward, and hopefully will be designed to really better address the needs of our charging students. Thank you for involving in that and continuing pursuing that. It's critical, essential, good work. Thank you. Thank you both for your presentations today. Okay, we're going to move on through the agenda. Just reporting again for purposes of our voting meeting next week. We'll have three sets of minutes that will be approving the special board voting minutes of August 14th, board workshop minutes of August 14th, and board voting minutes of August 21st. Next section is board policy. Next week, we'll be approving the second reading, several policies that we've already had a chance to talk about, some briefly, both our administrative team and board members have a chance to see these policies, read through them quickly. This is an area that we're into right now, where we're looking at personnel. And the interesting thing about this part of the policy development is that we're now combining three areas of the current policy, magnitude one. So what was, you know, administrative, professionals, board personnel now is a single area of employees. So there is some significant change in virgins and what we're seeing. So we'll be approving policies 302 with the employment superintendent, assistant superintendent, employment of district staff, which is 304, nepotism and central relationships, employment of substitutes, employment of summer school staff, and student teachers and interns. The new policies that will be having up, that will be up for first reading, I'd like to kind of spend a little bit more time with these. Start with policy 308, employment contract, board resolution. This is an existing policy that was updated to be applicable to, again, three areas of employee. There were some language that was modified to kind of bring it more in line with PSBA guidance and authority. There's some deleted language changes in nomenclature, replacing non-instructional employees with supported employees throughout the policy. And essentially, the policy otherwise would remain pretty much the same. Christine, is there anything else that you wanted to say about that particular policy?
No, I think it's a great idea to be compliant.
Yeah. 309, assignment transfer, well, just to go off, this is the other policy case I was alluding to. And we're updating some language on how we would address the requirement for additional background checks, appearances when an employee, let's say, moves from one school to another, one supervisor to another. And again, some basic change in nomenclature, some fundamental changes here, nothing or There's a policy 310 that we're omitting at this point right now. It's not on the agenda. It's on hold, it's up for legal review. PSBA leaders have some compliance concerns with this policy, so we'll be addressing that at a later date. 311 is suspensions and furloughs. Unfortunately, we don't deal with these too often, but there is a very specific procedure that we go through in a hierarchy of employees that are spelled out in this particular policy that indicates who gets furloughed or laid off first, and who would come back first in that sequence. And this policy helps to lay that out and define that. Policy 3, and suddenly, if anyone has questions, you know, when I'm away with any of these policies. Policy 3, 12, a performance assessment for the superintendent and assistant superintendent. Some of the language in this policy has been deleted, and the recommendation is to shift it over to administrative regulations. So I think that's really important, since, you know, we do have a process already in place for evaluating the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and this policy should be amended through administrative regulations to reflect the criteria to the areas that we do use for evaluating data for positions.
If I can just ask you a question about that. My understanding of administrative regulations is that it's not something that's subject to more approval or normally more review? With the performance assessment of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent being, I think, the sole function of the board, which kind of confused us as to why that would be delegated to administrative regulations.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, and a fair enough question, because, you know, you're right. You know, the administrative regulations by definition are developed by the administration and approved by the superintendent. So, you know, I think that's not a big plus to make sure that, you know, this administrative regulation is developed, that it's reviewed carefully with the personal committee of the board, because essentially, we'll be the ones implementing both this policy and administrative regulations.
So who then develops the policy? When we say administrative regulation, who's developing the administrative regulation of the board?
We usually get our administrative, we now have a service in PSBA that provides us with sample administrative regulations. However, in this particular case, what they're suggesting is that we take some of the, some of the, some of the components that are very specific to our district in terms of our evaluation format, and codify it and put it into an A R. So we're going to have to do that. I think that's probably going to have to be something that we cooperate with, maybe the personal committee and Christine on that. And obviously, input from the superintendent and assistant superintendent, because, you know, when we look at designing the evaluation process, you know, there is a role for the superintendent and assistant superintendent in the design and development of the evaluation document.
I mean, I would like to make sure that the full board's included in that process as well, not just personnel.
Again, I think, you know, it's probably personnel's responsibility to do the, probably the initial work and then share with personnel. The next policy is 311, evaluation employees. They do need some libraries there within the current policy. It's specific to administrative employees, and it's procedural. And again, some recommendations for putting some of this stuff, it's a little bit more procedural, into administrative regulations. There's also, you know, an aspect of this system that talks a little bit about, you know, a timeline for collective bargaining agreements that are entered after July 1st of 2012, and rating systems for professional, temporary, professional employees. So we have to make sure that whatever we're using right now in terms of those procedures are consistent with what has been mandated by the state. So I mean, there's not, we don't have discretion in this area, there are mandated protocols for evaluation of this personnel. Unless it's part of, again, this is part of collective bargaining agreement prior to 2012, and I don't think we have anything to pause on that.
Dave, I have a quick question with this. Well, it's probably not a quick question, I might think it's a quick question, it's probably not. How often is the rating system that's here, how often do we see variety among these scores? And what I mean by that is, are all of our teachers scoring proficient or are distinguished? Do we have? Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. The scoring system or the rating system that we have under 313, how often do we see variety within these scores?
Well, I mean, any employee that falls at the needs improvement or deficient range or unsatisfactory range would require a PIP, you know, professional improvement. So, you know, I guess that's the measure right there, you know, how many professional improvement plans we generate in the course of the year. If not, then there's, you know, otherwise, I consider, you know, deficient or similar. But I don't have, I don't know if personnel has that data that they provide. I don't think there's a requirement to provide that to the public or to the board, but I'm sure if the board had a request for that information, that that could be provided.
The reason I ask is, through my time here, I can understand that teaching is not easy. And it would strike me as strange if every year there were no issues or no improvement needed that could be identified under a policy like this. So I'm curious to see if that occurs, and to what degree that occurs. So I guess that's more of a thing that the administration could provide, the email, and probably what I want to talk about here, or maybe...
The people who speak about that are principals, and most people who supervise, I think, they do this all the time.
The state, you know, law that oversees evaluation of teachers is at 82, which includes the formal observation component and the data component and that type of thing. I would say we would probably see more instances of maybe a teacher being needs improvement in one particular component out of a total of 22 in a formal observation, as opposed to an overall teacher being, you know, unsatisfactory or something along those lines. Because by the time you factor in the data, the overall score of the building, the SLO, those kinds of pieces, I mean, I don't have exact numbers for you, but my hunch would be probably a very high percentage, you know, of our teachers are, are no scoring proficient or distinguished. But some of that is driven by the evaluation model that the state, you know, has, you know, for us.
And would you say that our assessments of our teachers are rigorous, the principals are going through them, or the events are...
I think the Danielson model, which is what we use, is extremely rigorous. You know, the challenge, you know, is not the model, you know, the challenge is interactor reliability amongst all the individuals that are doing, you know, observations and ensuring that our principals have all the P D and all the support they need to, you know, evaluate, you know, according to those guidelines. But the Danielson rubric itself, I think, if you asked any teacher in the room, you know, you look at the distinguished, you know, components, you know, on that rubric, that's pretty demanding.
I have a question. Do we use the format deployed by the Board of Education, or do we have an alternative format for teacher evaluation as an improvement?
We use the...
So has that gone through the approval process with the Department of Education?
Yes, that's one of the... Yes.
Okay. So it's one of the approved models.
Yes.
And how much, how much student performance data is incorporated into the teacher evaluation? Because it seems to me that there's a component, and I think it can't be more than maybe 25% of the evaluation.
Yeah. I think, and it's different based upon whether or not the teacher teaches a tested subject or doesn't teach a tested subject. So like, you know, a third-grade teacher, you know, is going to have the PSSA and the PBS data by virtue of what they teach, but a seventh-grade social studies teacher, for example, is not going to have that data because seventh grade social studies is not a tested subject. I, you know, I'm going off memory, Dr. Ann Murdaugh, but I think, I think the evaluation, like the formal observation teacher does, I think that's 50%, and we've got administration, if I'm wrong, that's... I think it's 50, and I think it's 25.
I don't know.
It's like 50%, 50% of the SLO. The rest of all that they do is basically like, 20%.
I think their data is 20%. Their score is...
Thank you. There is, yes. 50% observation, 15% building level, you know, data. So that would be your PSSA, your PBS, you know, 15% is teacher-specific. So, for example, so currently, we have the school performance profile, which is going to be replaced by the teacher rep PA, and that's a whole another conversation, but under the, under the school performance profile, every single building gets a percentage score. So if I'm a teacher at Wrighton, whatever, you know, the building level score is on the SVP for Wrighton, that's my building level data, that's the building level data for every single teacher in Wrighton. Teacher-specific data, that's your PBS and your PSSA piece for those that teach, you know, tested subjects. And then the remaining 20% is your elective data, that's your SLO, your student objectives. Locally designed rubrics can fall under there, community assessments can fall under there at the district, so to choose it.
And then if you're split between buildings, if you're split between buildings, then, like, if we have a teacher that's, for instance, Joe and I have teachers that go in between, then they get a combination of both our school data and his school data. So put it in a form, it calculates everything for you.
All right. Now, since we're on personnel issues, can I ask a fresh question, Christine? I was very surprised a couple of weeks ago to find out that we did no pre-employment drug screening. And I'm still surprised that we did not. Did you ask it?
Oh, you're stealing my question.
But I know that you're looking into that, but it is my understanding that we do not screen employees prior to hiring.
No, you don't. And I am working, I do have some other stories, and I am working with Bell to get more information for you, and I did have this conversation, things out, and we had exchanged emails. So that's something that I'm still getting more information about. But no, currently, we do not do pre-employment, except for our drivers that require C D Ls, and that's what we're doing.
Turn it over to you, Mike. I didn't need to interrupt you, that was probably a group, but to build off that question, do we have provision under policy to ask an employee to take a drug screening apart from C D L?
If there's reasonable suspicion, or if somebody came in, and we felt that they came in to work in intoxicated or something, of course, that we can address. And I checked that with our students. So, Mike, I am, I do actually have information on my desk, I'm waiting to gather some information.
Now, that's by statute, though, that's not an important policy.
No, I don't think... No, I don't think we have anything officially in our policy, but our solicitor, Ellis Katz, said that we really don't need an admin.
Well, I'm, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned that we don't have the authority to do that. I was just, thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if there is provision somewhere in the work policy. It seems to be, you know, just about everything in the policy, I think. So I don't know where it would be, but I'm sure it would be under the employment section somewhere to cover that. It'd make the numbers we continue to go through this, and this topic, it should be something that we're talking about. Speaking of, you know, screening is the next policy, it's 314. And it has to do with physical examinations and prior to employment, an employee will have to go through a general physical exam by a certified practitioner or a nurse. You know, this was a policy we had, this is nothing new, but there are some additional modifications to the language and they added a 91 religious exemptions, compliance is And they removed affidavit language, which is not recommended, whereas there is a, there is a legal basis to require that, an affidavit. Although whether the physical examination itself, to just maybe just diversify, it'll be into the question about the DNA use, you know, whether that has any carry on. Certainly doesn't imply that there'd be any actual, let's say, testing or screening or blood urine analysis, but there could be some questions, you know, within the actual physical exam that might lead to, you know, the use of alcohol. And certainly, use of alcohol is not prohibited, you know, moderate use.
Drug production.
But, yeah. Probably probably be, but I mean, alcohol usage.
Unless they're.
I have prescriptions, you know, but the moderate, moderate use. There's some technical aspects to it, and there's also some civil rights issues that I think we have to make sure we, you know, the commercial of our, you know, of our. So those are, those are policies that are up for first week or next week. I encourage, we'll all available on our website, booking our, so your administrators and personnel people especially, if you, you know, have the time to really go through these and make sure.
Dave, I just have a quick question about this one. For physical examination, one thing that I see oftentimes on the municipal government side is that municipality itself appoints a position that all employees have to have their screening by. Is there a reason that we're not doing that in this instance?
You can go to your own position rather than going to this one separate. Yeah, if there's any stipulation about district screening, do you require it and mandate a single?
Well, I, I guess I'm more curious why we don't. The purpose on the municipal side is, you know, in the age of where you had civil service commissions, the purpose of it was to ensure that the municipality has somebody that they could trust that was administering things like physical examinations and drug screenings, so that a doctor that an employee themselves chose to go to would not hide things on their screening. And I'm just curious, you know, is there a purpose for that? I'm not that concerned that there's going to be, what's the word here?
Malpractice.
Well, yeah, but, you know, if only doctors never commit malpractice.
I was just saying.
No, I, I understand, yeah.
Is there, is there a standard form that employees are required to mandate?
We give them what they have to get to the doctor and they have to get the TV test and then those other questions, so that's standard, you know, what doctor you go to and they return that standard.
And this is borne by employees, isn't it?
Yes.
Those are employees.
We're playing all by the process of commercial.
We do the same with commercials, I think.
Basically, we're making people pay for it.
I mean, they have to, they have to pay for their own education as well.
My test is professional requirement, they discuss something related to a job and a specific location.
Well, this is a, this is a requirement of state, this is a state requirement, so.
True, but I think you have to look into the cost of that if you're asking someone to offer, it'll be a few dollars on a visit. Just have them pay for that, otherwise they could say, oh, maybe I just don't want to deal with it, so it could be that handy, but I just think that the cost is the wolf's tail. We want to pick that up if we think they're reliable and fit and why don't we want to do that? If we're moving all through the EBS process, it's a commercial.
It could be, could be a hit of a CBA, if you want to, yeah, well, you consider that as a means of semi-wise coaching, but I would imagine if they're, if they're, do they, do they usually wait until they get an offer of employment and then get the physical examination, or do they, as they're, as they're shopping around the various districts, let's say, do they get their?
Yeah, I'm sorry, wait until the offer comes normally, then we'll go out and you have to do things like that.
Because it's, it has to be done with a certain amount of time, probably like within a year maybe or something.
Don't most jobs require physical and have expensive employee?
No, not out in the private sector, no. And the drug screenings in the private sector are generally paid for by the employer.
But what about, what about physical?
Well, most companies, that I'm familiar, that I'm familiar, only really require like a drug and alcohol screening and the company will pay for that charge.
So they don't, wouldn't require it?
No, unless you're like a CB, like if you're driving, I mean, you know, truck or working with heavy equipment or working, you know, it's a different type of job, but for office jobs or, you know, things of more severe type of conditions, it's generally just a drug and alcohol screening.
So what am I missing here when we were talking about pre-employment drug screening? Why wouldn't we want that? Why wouldn't we do the screening at the form of offering a job? I mean, why would it be a question? Because is it a big issue for us? Are we running into a lot of people who get rejected for drugs after retiring?
Our, our solicitor felt that there's actually like a violation of somebody's civil rights. That was our, Ellis Katz.
It's a, I guess it's considered a form of search?
Yes.
And therefore there needs to be reasonable suspicion or reasonable cause. So that may be part of that, I'm, you know, attorney obviously, but, you know, those are some of the things that I think Ellis pointed out in his initial analysis, and he has, from my understanding, he didn't go into great depth, but, you know, he had his initial response to it was that it may be fraud or something similar.
And I'm still working the issue with him, so I can do that more to a personal. How do you compare that?
No, no, I, you know, I understand. You know, I think again, you know, getting an opinion from an attorney is really just helping us to understand our legal exposure. We still have to make a policy. We still could make, the attorney could come back and say that, you know, his recommendation might be that we don't do this. However, we might say that our moral responsibility to our students is greater than the legal exposure to, you know, potential suit over, you know, violating somebody's rights. And so that, but I don't want to get into that discussion now, but we are hiring people who, you know, for, for 4,000 residents in Exeter Township, we are there, basically their guardian until, you know, 2:30 or 3 o'clock every day. So I, I hear the attorneys run around a lot, and again, when I work with attorneys, I always tell people there's a reason they're called counsel. And they're called counsel because they counsel you, but as the business owner and as the governing body, we still have to make decisions. And I think that if you give us that information, I would just ask that the full board think about their responsibility and roles beyond the legal interpretation. Yeah, my response to that is sometimes when you go against counsel, you sort of go at your own risk, you know, because they're the ones that lay out and evaluate which are the required behaviors, you take a certain course of action, so. I mean, while we may not in every case have to take that recommendation, if those lay out potential legal consequences, our failure to attend to that could result in expenses to us in the form of losses, I think that's a precarious position. The other comment is our policies at this time. Okay, I think we'll move on then to business functions, that's you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Hanberger. Next week we will be voting on three things related to business functions. One, responding to violent intruder instructive training, agreed with the Career Link of Berks County on, can you help us? He agrees.
Career Link, it is to provide additional custody services and opportunities for individuals against this.
Can I ask a few questions about that, because I read through that contract and it was really kind of confusing to me and, and we'll, again, we'll be bringing some folks into our buildings, I'm assuming that are not our employees, precisely, that's right. Yeah, and that they're getting paid by this other organization and, and I didn't see anything in there that required them to have child abuse clearance or the, you know, the other forms of criminal clearance checks that you normally find in the state police and that sort of thing in our unemployment practice. Are we going to insist that that's part of the, the protocol for these people who work here?
Yeah, and I think they do a screening right now, but.
They listed, they did list what they would do, but they did not list those specific ones.
Well, we, we can make sure that those are done before we bring somebody back to the standard.
I'm working, I'm mainly concerned about the, the child abuse, you know, and criminal history, you know, checks that might kind of violate what we normally expect an employee to have. It's been established now that any businesses that deal with school districts have to come with those clearances, such as construction workers, any of our contractors, so I'm sure that that's something you can ask them, as they expect. It just wasn't explicit in the contract.
And I had Ellis also reading the contract as well, but yes, we'll make sure they have those clearances.
Okay.
So actually, Career Link of Berks County provides these governmental services that go across the region. What is Career Link? Do you play?
Yeah, it's kind of like a part of the unemployment office, maybe a federal grant, where they're working to help people obtain jobs, so they actually have grant money that they go out to businesses and they do work and they pay through this federal grant. So Career Link is actually kind of like the extension of the unemployment office, so somebody's layoff from their job, you register at Career Link and, you know, job postings are there.
It's a job training.
Like job training, and actually, to collect unemployment or anything, you must register and, you know, go for a class, and that's what they'll have you go for a class there to require that if you're unemployed.
So has there ever been, have there been problems there at Career Link for people that they did, you know, employ, I mean, not employ, but, you know, sent them out and maybe, you know, installed something where they did this? Is there supervision with these people when they come into our district or are they on?
Well, I, I know they, they follow up and of course our supervisors, they also have to work with, you know, their people that are women, so it would be a combination of them and our people supervising them. But I haven't heard of any, you know, instances like that, I can surely ask that question?
Because I do know, I go to the WNC A and I know that they have people like this doing community service there and I know some of them are, have gotten into trouble with the ceiling and things of that nature, so I didn't know if there's any problem there at Career Link and they send these people.
I'll definitely ask that.
Okay, because I would like that they would have supervision if they're in our buildings and I don't know if that's the case.
Is this the first time we used this program?
Yes.
Yes. And did they, did they solicit us or did we, how did this arrangement come to be?
You know, I don't know, it was before my time. Was it before my time? I don't think on the air, or the air point.
I'm not sure, I know we used a different company for custodial substitutes that we were, we were down and, I mean, they charged us money.
Right, cooperation services.
But we were not having luck recently, but they were unable to provide anyone for us the last, you know, the last year, I would say, were unable to provide us people when we called for them, so we saw it on our.
So a question for Dr. Miller on the responding to violent intruder instructor training. Is that teaching people in the district to do the run for the high thing or is that some different type?
Yes, it's, it's similar to the Alice training. At the Alice training actually got bought out by a private entity and so it's covered with name now, and so school districts instead of paying for that program, they develop, actually Mr. John Baker of the 11 and 9U is now, I saw him at training last year at DC IU and he offers that and trains the ID that I've been seeing now, he's also effect. And he just got picked up by the state as the guru of this kind of stuff for the, for the board. But, so what they do is they come out and train our staff, our administrators, to train our employees on how to do the intruder training.
Okay, and finally, budget transfer to capital reserve of one and a quarter million dollars, you all should be aware. I have a question. Now, an email to me about this, she said that we have already approved 950,000, did it say back?
In the email, in the budget presentation back in June, when we look at the current year estimate and then the next year's budget, it included a transfer of 950,000. I waited until after the audit results to determine, or get approval, what the final transfer would be, because after all the transactions are in, things do change and our audit is, the site work is completed, we're doing the financial statements, but the results in revenue were within about 51,000 of the estimate presented in June. Fluctuations between local and state, but 51,000, but expense, general fund expense was about 505,000 less than budget, an estimate, excuse me, which is why I'm suggesting an additional 300,000 from 950,000 to 1.4 million. And it's really to support our, our capital expenditures. I mean, over the past, I did post another attachment on Word docs during 17, 18, 18, 19, of all the projects we've done, we've used 5.8 million in capital funds. So we are using them rapidly because we're getting a lot of project stuff, early feasibility study. So an additional 300,000 will help fund future capital projects through 2024 approximately. Jumping back to the expenditure wise, my estimate about eight tenths of a percent, you know, lower, you know, wages and benefits. Huge wage budget with corresponding benefits and, you know, things can be conservative, maybe a lot of turnover, so those two areas did come in under budget. Most of that 500,000, maybe it was in that. Basically, I did, you know, share the last six months of fiscal year why our expenses were under budget compared to the original budget, but end year results, opportunity here to transfer a little more into capital. projects for the future. And then also keeping, uh, the remainder, we are adding nine hundred thousand to our general fund, fund balance to support operations.
I just didn't remember the nine fifty. I didn't remember voting.
We didn't vote. It was just part of a presentation because, and Monday we made business functions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Personnel committee, Mr. Pino.
Personnel committee, we're discussing resignations, retirements, appointments, unemployment of, 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 and, uh, without the, the, the substitution.
Change of status, course requests, and staff conferences.
Final question. Why did we go through the process of having specific items on the voting agenda, but now we're doing these as part of the workshop? Why didn't we just drop all of this off in the ice pack and vote on it earlier and have it all taken care of so we don't have to deal with the next one? It seems redundant.
Well, I think some time ago, Dr. Phillips, um, was interested in doing the consent agenda, which would allow us to really fly through Hunter's, Hunter's turning over there, even though I have consent agenda.
Oh, he wants his fingers in that.
But, but I, I think the point, I mean, a consent agenda would basically wrap up all of these kind of oil plate items, if I had a better term, and we would take one, maybe one vote, and we're done. And then we can spend, first of all, it could speed up the time, so reduce the time that we spend in a meeting, um, and give us more time to fight about other issues.
I just, we're just getting more specific on the, we're doing resignations and things that nature. It's not like those individuals want to come back. They're already, they're leaving the queue. So, might as well just approve them and wish them good day and hope their lives go well. We hope someday they'll come back to business.
Well, we're not, we're not in voting, I hate it right now. So, we don't think, but here's one thing that I would just like to say, and, and this is for the, for the board, um, you know, we are planning workshop together, and, and topics that we plan on having. The workshop is really discussing various formats for conducting board meetings, you know. And, um, I, I know I have some ideas, other folks might have some ideas as well, but we can do some things to maybe be smarter, faster, um, more efficient. So, not a bad observation, and let's take that into consideration when we have our discussions.
That sounds relevant. That discussion.
Oh, well.
You think it's going to be done now?
So...
Um, where are we meeting, if you have to?
All right.
Where are we going to be meeting?
On the, on the, yeah.
This is the eleven.
This is the one. We're, we're here. We struck out in our place. Oh, we can't. Yeah, unfortunately, we struck out just about every place that we tried. So, we'll be here.
Right here. All right, good.
We had it in the B C T seat. Listen, listen.
I think she has a plus for it.
Yeah. I, I know we want to stay within the district anyway. So, whether it's here or somewhere in the district, you know, that's, yeah, take the time, though. We need to figure that out soon.
If there were lantern, lantern flies run at my home. If you come there, I have a beautiful backyard.
Are there any questions about personnel, any other personnel questions?
Um, under staff conferences. Did you say staff conferences?
Oh, did we get that? Is that a question?
My, my. We really went through.
Item number eleven, we need to review the cost. We're not picking up the cost of the subs that we were understanding there. It should be tall enough by another three or fifteen dollars for a total of eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. I'm ready. Item number eleven, staff conference, Dana Works, it's going to be a conference, please.
Well, it doesn't have a corporate.
It, it does not include substitutes. You know, I'm seeing a similar type of action in number thirteen, unless that's being picked up by someone else. I think that works, but there's a, there's a recognition. My apologies, Jim, I was working. I'm getting that done. That's, that's a good catch. Yeah, we'll get it fixed. Thank you.
Any other questions about conferences?
So, so, yeah, uh, number two, we'd like to vote the eight years deadline. We're sending four, five months, and now apparently it's six. Sending six people to this? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's number one, actually.
It's number one, right. You got them to number one. Got to change it. I turned it on Friday. So, uh, is, is that a thing that, and I've asked this before, but is that a thing that one person can go to and bring the knowledge back?
How many would like Dr. Miller answer that question since it's one of those people's services, specifically?
We are going to, we are starting to increase our, like D E T has allocated there being the district. And, um, the teacher who's going to be implementing, the counselors who'll be supporting the students, the supervisors, we all need a very strong working knowledge of the program. That program is not certified by someone to come back and make a trainer. They just, that's certified by someone to actually deliver the program. We're not going to deliver the program, but we fully need to have an in-depth understanding of this therapy that we're going to be operating here through training managers. And that's always a must.
The other thing I would add to that is, um, you know, because we were very, I'll just use the word approval, in our spending of Title II funds, you know, during the year, um, you know, we got to a point towards the end of the summer where we had around thirty-five to thirty-six thousand dollars remaining in Title II funds from seventeen, eighteen, that have to be spent by September thirtieth. Then, you know, maybe if you give them back, you know, they dig you in terms of when they come to your audit, um, which you had audited so, you know, every, so many years. And so, this is one of those things where, when I had the extra funds and I reached out to the different supervisors, Dr. Miller came back and said, gosh, you know, if we have the money, it'd be great to be able to send our votes to this. You know, is it something outside of excess Title II funds? You know, I don't know. You know, if it had fallen at a different time, you know, we maybe would have had to prioritize use of the money a little bit differently. But, um, you know, we just, you know, because of how we handled the funds during the year, we had a surplus and wanted to find a way to use it in a meaningful way. This was, this is one way.
And by the way, I, I, I put Dr. Sanders through the wringer in this. So, kudos to him for.
Sorry.
You don't have a choice.
You're right.
Any other personal questions? Okay, we're going to move on to student functions. Ms. Scranton.
All right. Next week, uh, we're recording on field trips that occur within sixty mile radius, as well as recommending approval of field trips beyond sixty mile radius. Um, C, agreement to agree with Pediatric Services of America, Inc. D, agreement with Michelin Council Group LLC. P, labor and release agreements. And F, um, contract agreement to study any I U, intermediate I U, and very wide virtual academy.
I will point out, if you haven't caught it already, um, we will be approving a trip on the eighteenth that they'll be taking on the seventeenth. So, if there is a concern about that right now, it was one of those trips that, I guess, they had the opportunity to perform at, at Philly. So, and I know we don't like to do that, and we've been very strict, uh, on our people to get those field trip requests in, in at least a month's advance. This was something that could be in August.
Since you did a state committee, wasn't it?
They did. This is where you say you're an evil over, okay? But then number two, on the field trips, senior high, uh, A, field trips within sixty miles. Senior high British Lit students to attend special day programming at the P A Renaissance Fair.
She's done it every year.
Is that educational? I'm, I'm asking. I'm not.
They've done it every, that year since my son was in high school and whoever's generation comes short, when Carol was here, she'd say her someone's doing.
Part, uh, Jerry, part of the, part of the British literature, you know, curriculum when they do it chronologically is some of the medieval literature, that, you know, the Death Mark or some of the other, um, texts from that time period. And so, getting experience at the Renaissance Fair would, um, get tied into some of the stories and some of the literature that you read in British literature early on in the year.
Moving history.
Yeah.
But, but the kids will tell you the real attraction is eating a turkey leg.
You're probably right, Mr. Pino. You're probably right. But there is a curriculum connection. I'm sorry.
That's it for, um, student functions. Um, next section has to do with election of P S B A officers for two thousand and nineteen. And, um, you see in there a list of candidates that are recommended, um, and they're, probably serving a one-year term, will be making, uh, recommendations. We'll be voting on it. Uh, some news handle it, uh, and we'll do this next, next week. We need more information about these candidates. I think it's available, um, on P S B A website, probably.
It is. I sent them the link out. I can resend it.
All right. Couple things before we, um, adjourn this evening. I, I do want to report that there were two executive sessions, um, on Tuesday, September fourth. One executive session was with the Transportation Committee to address legal matters. And then the other executive session was with the full board to discuss personnel matters. Also, um, I understand Mr. Bree is not going to be available next week beyond vacation and normally would be responsible for facilities report. And, um, wondering if you wanted to share that a little bit this week or next week.
I've got a few things I'd like to go over this evening. I asked Mr. Presumey to assist me to this. And I just hope that we can get a recap of the recent activities we've had on our improvement program. And I understand that there's instances of mold and a few of our buildings are still being, laying this on what the treatments have been so far and what we're looking at going forward with the continuum of work. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, as far as the, uh, capital improvements go, um, the chiller projects at Jackson mold and, uh, Lorraine are substantially complete. Uh, the boiler for Jackson mold is being delivered tomorrow and should be, uh, hooked up and operational by the twenty-first, which is next Friday. So, uh, the vestibule project is complete. Uh, we're doing a final, uh, sort of closeout meeting for that next week. And we'll be addressing some of the other outstanding issues for the, the chiller installations from over the summer. Uh, the L E D project, I don't know if you noticed it here, they were in here today. We, we really involved in this room. They're working at Lausch. And, uh, again, the, uh, the dimming issue is still being, is, is still in discussions with the contractor regarding the vestibulations to those. Um, I'm not sure if there's any other project related things.
Do you want to discuss the, the Lausch vestibule program, um, progress?
Sure, uh, that, that's complete. Uh, we got that area cleared out for Res Light. They were in last week, uh, starting on two family. They were here all week, uh, installing the mats, uh, on the walls and on the floors. So, that facility is basically ready to go for the vestibule.
Now, back to the room.
Oh. Um, yeah, uh, working with Eric Flam, uh, the principal, he had some concerns with some rooms. So, uh, we had our testing company come out and test six rooms. Three of them came back fine. Uh, three of them came back with, uh, uh, an elevated level of, uh, aspirin, lidocaine, which is an allergen. It's a mold spore. So, uh, upon that, on getting that information, we contacted our, uh, our company that comes in and handles that Berks Fire Water. They were in last week and cleaned, uh, and treated the areas in question. Those areas where we tested yesterday, I got those results this afternoon slash this evening out of the three rooms. Uh, and the guided suite, the two classrooms came back fine. So, they can be opened up again and used. The other room, uh, went from elevated to slightly elevated. So, they're suggesting that we hit it again with the cleaning process. So, uh, I'll be working on that tomorrow. Additionally, on Monday, uh, there were some other rooms that came up as a concern, uh, both in the junior high and, and, uh, the area of the team rooms and the senior high. I had all those areas tested and I'll give those results.
Recently, there was an item of leaking, uh, is that the junior high school?
Yeah, we have water infiltration in two major areas in the junior high, uh, music room and the girls locker room. Uh, those areas are persisting after the roof project that was done there. And it's my belief, and they're, we're still, uh, we're currently getting pricing from Tremco that the water's coming in through the brickwork on the building.
Going down, you want to, Mrs. Howard, Dr. Schlafer, now you have new entrances in your buildings. How's that working for your students and your staff at this point?
We, um, at Lorraine, it's been very positive. Parents have been complimenting, um, on the new design. They very much like it. It feels, uh, secure. Um, and it's not invasive. Uh, so, we've been able to enter and exit the building quickly. Uh, so, it's, it's been a nice addition. It, it definitely makes the building very much safer. Thank you.
How, how just your talk right now, Mrs. Howard, how's the flooring situation? I know the tile may not have been resolved, but how's the carpeting situation?
Uh, twelve rooms were carpeted. Uh, they, they have made a significant difference. Rob knows that because we didn't have air conditioning for so long, some of the tiles started to pop off. But they seem to be going back down now because it's cooler in the building because the air conditioning has been great. I almost need to tell you this, but sometimes it's too cold.
I don't hear that.
Sorry, you know, just, just, just in layers. So, um, but that's been great. And, um, you know, I'll be working with Rob and Ann to look at flooring in other parts of, of the building, other rooms.
And Dr. Schlafer, how's your H V A C situation?
Well, I went to send these people home before eleven o'clock. So, no, I, I, first off, the outside doors have been a great, great improvement to our building. Super improvement. Stores were in such bad shape, half of, half the doors weren't on the alarm for I don't know how long. It enclosed it and had things. There was, there were problems, immense problems, that have been solved. Grateful for that. Um, the H V C, H V A C we know is not going to be solved this, this year. The problems that existed last year still exist because they have, there's, there's a stage process that's going on. So, what they did this, did this year is improvement to the chillers and what we're going to have in the future. But as of right now, we still have the same problems we had last year. Um, the, uh, we, we, and, you know, the installation was not without, without problems as well. You know, the installation to the building was, was difficult. And, uh, but I, I think, you know, overall, the long range plan should be good. Wish everyone well on that project. But, uh, for us right now, at this point, I'm still doing the same H V A C things I did. And we still have the same, same concerns.
Regarding the high school and the H V A C, how are we going to, is that prepared?
Yes. Yeah, train was in last week. They got the, uh, gearbox replaced on the cooling tower. They craned it. Uh, they were in Thursday and Friday, and by Friday afternoon it was running. We have now, you know, the normal zone issues that we normally have everywhere with, with having the two sets.
With the great weather we've had recently, have you spoken with our contractor regarding the baseball field and what they're going to be doing to approach that? And then tying away the supports. What's going on with the track? If any tracks are going to be? Keep cutting the track. It's a traffic.
Track's fine as far as I am.
Some reason I saw that in a recent memo.
I might show it to my partners.
Yeah, but it was in an email this past week. I saw a track.
People are running track. Wait, no, they're not. No, they're not. They're not.
Moving some equipment around on the track. That's not.
But the baseball field, how, what are we going to do there?
They're, uh, they've got the, uh, signed agreement, the purchase order, and I'm trying to schedule a kickoff gate for them so we can get started.
That's all I have this time. I also have some questions.
Thanks for the report. Now, we just want, you know, go through the reports.
Now, you're covering, I remember when I did yours, you said you did it.
Yeah. Before we adjourn, are there any other board members you'd like to be heard at this time?
But to bring up an issue, right, you know, regarding this, and thank you very much, Paul, for, for coming on and talking to us. I, recently, there was an article about Matt Dash. We, uh...
I, recently, there was an article about Matt Afflemane and the PSBA and the TIPS program, which originated, I'm not sure, ten years ago, and I think that it's once again a sign of an individual took the initiative to put forth an effort to see a situation needed a problem solved, and he was proactive and looked for a solution. And through that grassroots movement, it seems like it's taken off a very positive way, and I think recognizing once again that and his team, I think is very good. I think that as a district, sometimes we lose focus of why we're trying to do things, but I think that is one of the projects that has occurred in the recent past, the last time, since I've been on board, that I'm very proud of the fact we've been able to help pay that off at speed. And I want to thank all the others that have contributed with that to make that successful. I know last year it was recognized on a national level also, and it's just one more sample approval of how well that program looks for a need and provides a solution.
I'd like to agree. Can also just mention, I don't know that people are aware that there were three hundred and sixty slots that were filled for our students to be able to go to TIPS, as well as thirty-three of our teachers that took part in that nationally aesthetic, state-recognized program that started here in Exeter, and is at six different schools in our county, which have districts that support them better than the one where it started.
I mean, there was a lot of discussion today through email about the TIPS program, and I think there was a request for information that was promptly filled and led to a further discussion around the program. Well, you know, probably the two smart people that stayed out of that back and forth discussion were Dr. Phillips and Dr. Winters. But I think there's some value in understanding how you guys feel about the TIPS program and its value to our students. So could you share with the board your thoughts about the TIPS program?
Sure, we both congratulate Mr. Afflemane's team on what they've accomplished. We did see the article, and it was a very impressive article. The program has proven to have been a source of pride for the district and continues to grow. It's not only had a state, state as well as national recognition. So we'll continue to support it and promote it, and we will be putting the link to the article on our website. We did, I'm sorry, we did visit the, the three sites within the district, the Crestwood Pool, the Lorraine Hollow, and then the Tiam Pool. Mr. Gallof was with us as well, and it was nice to see the, the smiles and excitement on the students as well as the teachers working with the students.
I don't mean to diminish Mr. Gallof's request, because I think it's valid, and I think some of his concern was that there was a delay in getting information to him, and I think it's always important that we look at, you know, programs that we invest in, but I'd also like that we keep it in perspective. I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars is not a little bit of money, it's a lot of money, but we also have a seventy-five million dollar budget, and when we're looking for return on investments, I think it's important that, that, you know, putting a financial value on something is not necessarily fully recognizing the value of the program itself, but I appreciate that you're looking for information here, and I think it's okay as a board member when a request is made, and I hope that, I know, I know the TIPS program in the past has stood before the board and shared information, and I'm sure it's going to continue to do that as well.
Right, we're gathering it from CISA communities, schools of Pennsylvania, the ones that manage the payroll and other fees, and in conjunction with Matt, Happy Valley, the enrollment. Just trying to gauge the numbers and the budget, it's just really what we do. We're following up to make sure that what the board approves, and for CISA as well. You do a true-up at the end of any program to make sure that it makes sense. But it's been taking some time, there's turnover at CISA and getting the information taken down.
I had to look, Mike said, and I'm sure that Mr. Afflemane could give much better accurate information than what I can, but in my, in the research that I've done, the TIPS program has raised over ten thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen to support the program, as well as ten thousand dollars to kind of one grants with the help of our little ladies. But that twenty-five thousand dollars that we're paying, we weren't paying years ago until we demanded or requested that communities and schools be involved. So if they weren't involved, that twenty-five thousand dollar fee probably wouldn't be there or at all, or wouldn't be as great as what it is. We created, and not we, as little people, but the district, the board created that twenty-five thousand dollars that we have. If they weren't with communities and schools, that wouldn't be there.
Can I make one more recognition? I see the high school leadership this year, and I want to thank them for running a great curriculum overview last week. It was very well attended, it always flows well, the teachers are always so accommodating, really spend time with you. It's amazing to me how, how much time they actually spend with you when there's so many people flowing through the school, but thank you very much. I thought it was a great, a great job, well done, and I know that I saw all of the leadership all over the building, everywhere I was, no matter how many times we never get lost, so. Any other comments? Okay, you're adjourned.